Okay, good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors Zoom meeting for May 27, 2020. As usual, we will have a moment of silence, which again I will say to remember those that have been affected by this virus and their families. Remember the nurses, doctors, first responders, the police, fire EMTs, and also those that serve the public, those that bring the food to our cars, those that pick up our trash every day, and all those that we may come in contact with every day. Again, we will get through this and we will come out stronger for all the changes that are involved. So if we would just take a moment of silence right now. Okay, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lewis, is any changes or additions to the agenda today?
There was one addition, Mr. Chairman, item 11B related to the Villas of Newtown was added as of yesterday.
Okay, thank you. No special actions today? Do we have any public comment emailed in?
There's no public comment.
Okay. No minor approvals, no public hearings? Is Mr. Fidler available for the Planning Commission report? Alan, you're muted.
I am good.
All right. Go ahead, you're on.
All right. The synopsis for the May 19 Planning Commission is had three items on our agenda on the 19th, zoning hearing board appeal for Jim and Kathleen Dumont at 501 Sterling Street. The applicant was not represented due to oversight with this new virtual platform, but the PC members reviewed the application of with property which borders both the borough and the township. The applicant is seeking relief for impervious surface with a garage slash mudroom addition, porches, sidewalks, and changing the driveway access from Norwood to Sterling Street. This is a non-conforming lot. This is an older home that predates the ordinance, and there was discussion about the locations, the improvements being considered with the neighborhood and improving its character, and the question of what the hardship is to warrant the changes. The commission agreed that letters of support from the adjacent neighbors would be necessary to proceed successfully. The consensus of the commission was to have the zoning hearing board render the decision for this applicant. The bulk of our meeting was the second item on our agenda. This is the JMZO amendment, the E30 ordinance, convenience store slash fueling station. There was lengthy discussion, review, and discussion of the E30 use, which is finally being looked at by their jointure partners. To bring the jointure partners up to speed, a list of talking points was put together by myself and Mr. Shankman to be shared with the jointure, which was reviewed in detail. Additionally, it appears that none of the changes or requests made by Newtown Township Planning Commission were updated on the drafts issued by Mary Everly. As a result, we determined that Mrs. Fountain and Mr. Shankman will gather all of our recommendations and submit them and maintain a redlined version of the draft to ensure Newtown's issues are incorporated in future drafts. We also discussed how to best disseminate this information among our jointure partners and the Bucks County Planning Commission. The third item on our agenda was a JMZO amendment. This is a short-term rental ordinance. It was raised by jointure partners on vacation rental by owner Airbnb and related issues of renting to non-family members, especially when this is not a primary residence. The ordinance state that people not defined as family cannot live in the same space for more than a restricted period during any year. Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors should weigh in on this ordinance, proposed ordinance, and vote on it at the appropriate time. And the consensus of the commission, we had really no issues with the proposed ordinance. Just as a footnote, the comprehensive plan with the EAC, Jan Philos of the EAC is working on changes to noxious plants and invasive species, along with the parameters that should be included in the plant list for natural habitat. Jan is having a Zoom meeting tomorrow at 2:00 to go over the proposed changes, and I can forward to the township those things if she has not already done so. There's three documents that she wants to review tomorrow. And basically, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Alan?
Okay. About who is going to be at the Zoom meeting on tomorrow with Chan? Set the planning commission or EAC or?
It's Jan and I think one of her members, who is an attorney from Langhorne, that has done quite a bit of native plant and invasive species ordinances, especially the bamboo. We already have that on the books, but she's been pretty, pretty good at helping Jan move through this process. And, you know, I've been involved and John, John Mack has also participated. So, you know, I'm sure she can extend an invitation for any interested parties to the township so that if any of the board members or any of our members can participate if they're so interested.
Thanks, it kind of piqued my interest when I saw it, thanks.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I was just, let me just comment, Phil, if you will. I was just wondering whether that was a formal meeting of the EAC, of a majority of the members of the EAC? If, has it been advert, does it need to be advertised? Or is this sort of just a person doing something on their own on the side that doesn't need to be recognized as a public meeting?
I don't believe that this is a formal EAC meeting. I believe that this was basically a task force that Jan tried to get organized with participation of the Planning Commission and interested parties. So I don't think that it's ready to actually go public with all these different suggestions, but I do think that Michelle and Micah and anybody else in the township should, you know, take a look at what they're proposing to change because some of the plant species that were included in buffers are actually invasive and need to be removed. And those recommendations will be coming from Jan ultimately, I believe, through the EAC.
Yeah, and that makes sense if she wants to do the Zoom meeting with this attorney and whomever, as long as it's not a majority of the members of the EAC, she can put together her recommendation to the EAC. The EAC then makes a recommendation to the board via the Planning Commission. I know there's a graduated step up here, but just, just making sure that we're not violating any Sunshine Act.
Yeah, I don't think we're at that point. I think basically this is looking, getting more eyes to look at the plant list for the Newtown Township and the Saldau and things like that. And then at some point, you know, we'll formalize this and move on.
Good thing, thanks.
Any other questions for Alan? Okay, thank you, Alan, appreciate it.
Okay, I will leave you gentlemen to your work and hope everybody stays well. And maybe someday we'll, we'll get to meet in a, in a face-to-face meeting. So, but this is a great tool. I applaud the township for getting involved in this as early as a process. And, you know, it, it really does help, it makes things easy. Planning Commission loves it, you know, and I think we'll, we'll continue to try and do our job as best we can, so.
Thank you.
Take care, Alan.
Thanks a lot, bye-bye.
Okay, board members' reports. Well, Alan had a perfect segue into, I guess, live meetings, and I just want to throw that out there. For our next meeting, did you want to continue Zooming it? Or did anyone wanted to meet live at the municipal building?
I have an issue about the Zoom meetings if we're going to continue to do this much longer. I know that other townships, including Wrightstown, have had Zoom meetings where they invited, you know, residents to participate. And it's perfectly feasible using Zoom to mute people until they raise their hand. So if we continue to have these Zoom meetings, you know, I would like them to be more open to the public.
Okay, we could try to figure that out. But in the meantime, does anyone take into consideration meeting live at the municipal building?
Well, what's, what's the plan for opening the municipal building, Micah?
Well, the plan would be to set up chairs in accordance with CDC guidelines in the audience. Obviously, people would need to be masked. We'd need to rearrange the seating arrangements here so that we could be socially distant at the dais. Honestly, I haven't really explored it that much. There's nobody to take temperatures or anything like that. But, you know, I think if, we could certainly come up with a plan if the board was, was inclined to meet live again.
Well, we're gonna have to meet live sooner or later, so I think you should come up with a plan. I don't know when we should meet live again the first time, but I'm assuming that there needs to be some kind of a plan for the next six months.
And the information that comes out of the CDC and the Health Department constantly changes. So, you know, once they nail them down, we'll, we'll sort of go by those guidelines and we'll develop a strategy.
Okay, I guess for the, for the time being, we'll just continue to meet with Zoom. Micah, if try to, if he can figure out if, how to get other people on, mute them, let them raise their hand if they have a question.
If you need to know more about that, you can contact Wrightstown Township manager. They've done it several times and it works perfectly fine.
Well, I know, Dave, I'll throw this question to the lawyer. I know the FBI sort of.
Yeah, I round on it, I mean, here's the issue. It's, it works great, John, John, it works, it works brilliantly when the folks who join the meeting and are muted don't post any kind of bombing type of video or otherwise disrupt the meeting. It works fabulously well until someone does. And it's happened in numerous municipalities, and it's not pretty. It's extremely cringe-worthy. And we, the township is complying with the law when it allows public comment to be submitted via email and read aloud. And I don't think we've had a problem with that. I think that the township is taking a serious risk in proceeding with allowing the general public to access the Zoom meeting.
Well, I mean, there are townships that are taking a risk and I haven't seen any actions. I mean, I've done a Zoom meeting, yeah, there was somebody on there, but you can delete them quickly. So, you know, it's, it's a matter, you know, I, I just think whatever the law is, this is extraordinary times and you're limiting the ability of the residents to participate in a public meeting, is my opinion.
That's, that, that's your opinion, I think there's, you need to weigh the pros and cons. The board as a whole needs to weigh the pros and cons.
Okay, this has gone beyond, I just posed a question, I didn't think it was going to be a major discussion. So, Micah will check into the possibility of having others on the next Zoom, and I guess we'll just keep Zooming it until we have a secure guidelines of entering the municipal building and having a meeting there. The second thing I want to bring up is that usually during the summer months, June, July, and August, we do not have a second meeting. I don't know how the board feels about that, but from what Micah tells me, we only need 24 hours to report having a meeting, is that true, Micah?
Yes, the advertisement is, is for a 24-hour advertisement.
Is that also 24 hours to cancel?
No, that's just, you can cancel at any time. It's just to, to have 24 hours in advance of any meeting needs to be advertised.
All right, so I mean, we could keep the schedule as is with the two meetings, and if we want to cancel the second meeting with the consensus of the board, we could always just cancel that within a, whatever, 24 hour period or whenever we know that, okay?
Yeah, you're gonna put it on the website, Phil, if you cancel it and you're going, you don't need to advertise anything. You put it on the website, the crawler, the, and you'd post the township building even though technically it's closed to the public. You just do that just to make sure that if anybody shows up, they know.
Okay, great. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Fisher, you're up.
All right, let me permanently unmute myself here a second. Sorry about that. I had three, three items, two of them are quick. One is, I'll start with the long one first. The Finance Committee is offering, and in fact, they have a meeting, I think, on the books canceled for June, June 9th. I probably would like to maybe see if we can set up a Zoom meeting for them to meet. They're interested in helping in any way we, any way they can with bringing the Economic Development Committee up to speed and giving some, you know, advice around the reopening. They've actually, they've actually, over the course of months, done a little bit of economic development. So they, they do have some contacts. And so it would be good if they could meet June, June 9th. Like I said, they'd be, it could be that some of the members of Finance Committee even want to submit for the Economic Development. All these committee names keep getting me mixed up. But Economic, Finance Committee members may want to apply for a second committee. As well as that, like I said, they're willing to try to get things off the ground until the, until we approve the members of the Economic Development Committee. That, and I would just say that George Scudani, who's on the Finance Committee, has actually started coming up with some ideas from our meeting. From our meeting two weeks ago, he started compiling a list of, list of ideas that I shared in writing with the board and, you know, it would be, it would be, give us a little jumpstart, a little bit of a head start if we do that. If our next meeting, next scheduled board meeting is the 10th, they'd actually have a meeting on the 9th that could, you know, they could get to, get the ball rolling a little bit and then hand off to the Financial, the Economic Development Committee. Does that make sense?
Well, can we talk a little bit more about this on their old business, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely, why don't we continue the old business?
Let me give you my two short ones.
Okay.
The, this hopefully is the last one or two, last time I have to talk about Nob Hill, but we are finally nearing completion where they're doing some network out here in Nob Hill and Devonshire this week. And maybe they'll get to doing some, some of the, starting the repaving next week or the following week. They still, they still got a lot of cement work done, but all the, all the sewer line work is done. So I've been reporting on that. The other, the other is John, John and I both attended the Newtown Fire Association meeting on Monday a week ago. And, you know, those, those, those guys and, and, and women on the Fire Association have really, really done a good job protecting us. Our paid emergency department staff have really done a good job and just, and just, they really, they really did appreciate it when I thanked them for everything they've been doing for the township and keeping us, keeping the community feeling safe and covered. So if everybody can do that, remember, it's, it's an echo from Phil earlier that if we just keep our police and firemen and EMS and first responders and nurses and all those nurses and doctors, all those folks in mind and our thoughts all the time, and be sure to thank them. So, that's all I had.
Great, thanks, Dennis. I'll just quick ask Jerry if you wanted to piggyback on the Nob Hill situation?
Thank you, Phil. As the Chair of the Newtown Sewer Association, the authority, I should say, Dennis has it right. The problem has been since the governor has allowed the restart of construction, of public construction projects. Everybody's restarting at the same time. And there's been some difficulty getting the contractor and most of his subcontractors onsite with materials that they need, particularly the concrete, which was in short supply for a while. And the subcontractors had, were basically all over the place and they just have not been available to come to here. But I think they will be doing that work next week. If you go through Nob Hill, Dennis, you can confirm this. I understand that there are lines in the street at this point where the paving is intended to go, is that correct?
Yes, there is, nice, nice, it was all the way along.
Yeah, so the, the idea is that hopefully the township will be not that far behind in doing its job there. I'm not sure what the schedule is there. But the idea is to obviously pave what has been opened and to overpave because it's, most of it's in the middle of the street and the thickness is very, to keep it on a particular bowed construction. So there's, they're not, it's not going to be enough macadam to pave it completely. It's just be enough to pave the holes, pave the cracks and all that, but it's not going to go from curb to curb because that's not the job they were hired to do. So until the township gets there, everything will be functional, everything will be fine. But it's some, on the edges, it's going to be very thin. So it's going to be important that the township get there or whether we give the contract to, to get there relatively quickly so that it's finished the correct way.
It'll be, I'm sure it'll be better even, even in that interim stage.
I'm sure it will be, yeah.
It's because it's like gravel, what we got now.
Yeah, no, the, the thinness it will be, will be a couple of inches, but it's supposed to be seven inches and it's just not, it's not enough. We can't do all of that because that would be doing the same job as a township is going to do. But when it's finished, it'll be fine. And even in its interim state, it's going to be totally manageable. That's all I know about it at this point.
Thank you, Jerry, for that update.
You're welcome.
John?
Well, yeah, last meeting I mentioned the Newtown Bingo game and it's now going on. So people want to participate, there are 25 local businesses that are participating. And the deadline is June 6th to get bingo. For more information, you can go to www.nutownbingo.com. And then the Newtown Business Association is doing a virtual scavenger hunt, which will run from June 22nd through June 27th to help build up businesses for their members and other businesses. So details can be found on the Newtown Business Association website, That's it for me, thanks.
Thanks, John. Kyle?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, David?
Um, nothing to report, but more of like a comment, Mr. Chairman. Not necessarily pertaining to our township, but more or less like community at large and also, you know, the community that we serve. And I think that there's a lot of people that are searching for answers and a little bit distraught these days based upon events in Minnesota and in New York. And I know we're, we're following a lot in terms of pandemic, but there are people out there also that are affected in many different ways in this country. And, you know, it's disappointing to me what's happening. It's a bit of a travesty, but I just share with everyone that's watching and it's, and that's here in the meeting that, you know, reach out to your friends, talk to them, wish them well, check in on them. You should know, just share, just share love because I think during these times where people are just so stressed because of being locked in their homes or not knowing what they're going to do as far as their paychecks are concerned or they want to open up their businesses and, and everyone's stressed and everyone's on edge. But I think that, you know, I just encourage everyone to make sure that we're at least reaching out to folks that during these times that might, might need a hug or some love, well, obviously you can't hug them, sorry, but a virtual hug. But, you know, just an act of kindness or love, just to, just to show that, you know, you're thinking of them during these very unique and interesting times, that's all.
Thank you, well said, David, thank you. Moving on, we have no land development, reports of officials, Leanna?
Thank you. First item we have is the authorization to advertise the 2020 Liquid Fuels Road Program rebid. As you know, in March, we originally bid the road program in the, you know, general amount of $1.3 million. As we discussed before, the plan was to reject those bids and rebid the project with a reduced scope of work in order to use mainly liquid fuels funds. So now are, we are seeking the authorization to rebid the new base bid work, which includes the roads, Upper Silver Lake Road, Penn Street, Newtown Yardley Road, and Swamp Road. This is approximately 1.6 miles of roadway. And then we have several alternate bids. The quick breakdown of the roads is Penswood Drive, Colonial Drive, Quaker Drive, Sentinel Drive, Sebelius Drive, Commonwealth Drive, Silver Lake Road, Newtown Gate Drive, and Fountain Farm Lane. So our cost estimate, actually I won't say that. But, yeah, so basically now we're just seeking authorization to rebid and hopefully we would award at either the second. And hopefully we would award at either the second meeting in June, depending what happens or the first weekend in July.
Do I have such a motion?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion from the board?
Is there, you have a, the liquid fuels funds can only be used for this and certain other purposes related to roads. Is that correct?
Yes.
How much is, do we have available?
We have about $600,000. Micah, do you have the exact amount?
You're muted. Micah, you're muted.
I'm mute, Micah. Sorry. In, in the liquid fuels fund, there's $685,000 of liquid fuels money. The liquid, the road program that we've sort of combined and put together is, is roughly about $600,000. Because we're trying to retain some of that into next year. So we can use it either for paving for next year or possibly the purchase of additional equipment like we had done this year.
And Leanna, you mentioned the miles of roads. I mean, how much do we hope we can, can do, including the alternate bids?
I think the goal, let's see, so the base bid is about 1.6 miles. And then probably another mile or so of alternate bids would be the, the goal. So, you know, two and a half miles, certainly the prices could come in favorable right now as well. So we could, we could do more with that.
Well, we mentioned the, you know, problem with the construction on the Colonial Drive with the materials. Do you think that's going to be an issue for us?
We're looking at construction probably in late July or August. So I would hope by then the problems might be sorted out a bit with those kinds of things. I don't anticipate that being a problem, you know, once we're in construction.
We've broken those bids out into alternates. So those roads, if they, should they not be done, or should they not be in a condition where we can go in there and pave per the contract? Those alternate bids would be rejected and we would just, we would move on to other, fulfill that $600,000.
Well, that doesn't have anything really to do with the supply of concrete and so forth. I mean, I don't know where we get our concrete from. Maybe China could help us. China.
Well, that's the, whoever's paving the road, we get the concrete. We don't buy the concrete.
Yeah. So I, I don't think that would be a problem once we're in actual construction for this, for this job.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And I would, I quick did some math and, and the, the base bid and the, the four alternate bids that, namely Penswood, Quaker, Colonial and Sentinel, they, they come up to just over 600,000 altogether. So hopefully that, hopefully that all fits.
And there is some general money, the general fund money that will be required to do some of the curving and some of the ramps. Yeah. If we were to award those, it will break those costs out once we receive bids.
Leanna, can you just briefly explain what liquid fuels is and where it's derived from?
The liquid fuels funds, it's derived from Act 13 taxes. And basically it gets dispersed to municipalities based on the amount of miles of roadway that you have. So every year or two, the inventory gets updated if new roads get added. And then, you know, the, the funds get distributed to each municipality accordingly.
Okay, great. Fantastic. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions from the board? There's no public, so I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you. The next item we have is just a discussion for some grant funding that's available right now. This is the D C E D multimodal transportation fund grant. As you know, we, the township did receive funding from this grant last year for the Lower Doolington Road multi-use trail. We didn't receive the fund that we applied for at the time. So I think it would be kind of a great opportunity now, and we can discuss this today, obviously, to seek some additional funding from that grant this year. One of the great selling points of this grant is there's 0% match from the municipality. So essentially, you know, what you would apply for would be all money coming to you. This was originally due the end of July, but now they recently pushed it to the end of September. So we do have a little bit of time, but I just wanted to bring it up today to discuss if we wanted to apply to, you know, fund the Lower Doolington Road Trail, the portion that we might not be able to complete because we did get the reduced funding or another trail segment in the comprehensive plan, that could be an option as well. But I think it probably looks good to try and continue the work that you are already working on in terms of reviewing of the grants.
And this, this is more of a shovel ready project at this point, after Leanna and her team get done doing the survey and the design work. It's more of a bidding and shovel ready project than it was before. So it will receive higher scores when they're, when they're scoring these for, for the award of an application.
Does the, the trail, will that extend all the way up to lower, lower Silver Spring or Upper Silver Spring? I forget. How far is that going up?
Yeah. So the original trail segment is from Frost Lane to Upper Silver Lake Road.
Okay.
With the reduced funding that we did get, we were planning right now to construct from Frost Lane roughly to that Pico easement and a little bit north. So with all the funds that we do have. So we would be seeking some more funds to get this all the way up to Silver Lake Road.
And this grant will be the one to get it, to get that done.
Yes, if, if we're awarded.
So regardless of whether we get this new grant, the work is going to go ahead on the Lower Doolington Trail. Up to the, okay.
That money, that the funds allocated for the construction of the trail are from rec capital, which is money put into that account by developers. So it's not coming out of the general fund.
No. Well, I know that some of the residents on that side of Newtown were a little disappointed when we weren't able to extend the trail all the way up to Upper Silver Lake. So this is going to be, if we get it, this would be a really nice way to make those, those residents happy.
Now, there's no, no matching funds required by the township, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So there's, there's no negative in, in us applying for this grant.
And it's basically a save as of the application that we had put together last year. Leanna can use a lot of the same language and the same information that was, that was put out to, to get the award for the, the amount of money we got this year.
Now, you mentioned that it's a shovel ready project. How much time do we have, if we get approved for the grant? How much time do we have to put shovels in the ground, so to speak?
Well, once Leanna's done with the design process and the surveying process, then we, of course, we have to probably bid it. Once it's bid, it needs all the permits and everything like that approved. And then we would probably move to construction. It, it looks more like next year. And hopefully the announcement of this award for this grant would be out by then.
Okay. Cause some shovel ready, from what I remember in the past, was like a 90-day period for you to get started on it. This is, this doesn't have that or?
I don't believe there's a requirement with this one, no.
No, you usually, once you get the grant agreement, it's, it could be two or three years. This one, I believe is two years from when you're awarded. So there would be some time there. But then again, you know, we're, we're a little bit ahead of the game because we are working on that first segment. So you know, that's been made and laid out a bit. So we're, we're moving along.
Did I hear correctly that the work on the trail won't begin until next year, like next spring or something like that?
Most likely.
Why is that?
So we were authorized, I guess, to begin the work this, like maybe a month ago. We were a little bit delayed with our survey just because of the shutdown. We couldn't get out there right away. So the minute that that was lifted, we did get out there and do the survey. So by the time, you know, we have our design complete and then the permitting process also, which, you know, takes a few months. And then publicly bidding, that gets us to, you know, early, you know, spring next year to get into construction. It's like a general timeline.
Okay, thank you.
The COVID slowed us down a little bit.
A little bit with the survey. Yep.
Leanna, do you think there is any way that because of, you know, things being slowed down based upon the pandemic, that, you know, there's potential that things can be expedited or a request to be expedited?
For permit applications and whatnot or?
To get, get the process started. Cause you said it was all delayed, right? Cause you couldn't get up to do the survey and all that stuff.
Just the survey, everything else now is, is on track. You know, we couldn't have our guys physically out there to, to construct the survey. Um, so that was just a little bit of delay. But other than that, you know, we're still kind of in track with the original timeline that we had, we had set.
Okay. Since this is just placed as a discussion item, Mr. Sanders, do we need to vote on anything to proceed with this or is that, does it matter?
I, I would defer that question to Micah and Leanna. If they're looking for action today, certainly it's appropriate. If not, then I guess it's for another agenda to take action.
It's just, it's just a discussion and sort of a general consensus to, that you all agree that, that this is, this is a route we should go. And Leanna will have the future resolutions and all that other stuff on the agenda for adoption in the future.
Well, when, when it comes to making a decision about if we do get the grant, I suppose in the application, you're going to mention that the main purpose of applying for the grant is to finish the current Lower Doolington Trail up to Lower Silver Lake Road, not to do some other trail at this point. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. And I was just, you know, I brought that up just, you know, as this discussion, but you know, clearly, you know, we're, we'll be looking to finish the Lower Doolington Road Trail.
When I saw this on the agenda, I thought that was the logical assumption. I don't like to make assumptions, but, you know, I thought that would, the trail was one of the ways to go.
It makes sense to me.
Okay. So we have a consensus to move forward with this?
Yep.
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay. Onto the solicitor's report. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item on our report today is the receipt by the township of a certified letter from the developer of the Villas Phase Two requesting pursuant to the MPC, the release of financial security pursuant to the MPC that triggers a duty in the Board of Supervisors to, by public action authorize the township engineer to, in this case, CKS, who's handling this particular project, to undertake an inspection, prepare a report, submit it to the board and for the board to take action on the requested dedication of public improvements and release of financial security. So this would be, again, following the MPC's procedure, procedure to the letter to avoid a deemed dedication and a requirement that we release the funds, even though it may not be done. I am asking the board for a motion to authorize CKS engineers to inspect the improvements associated with the Villas Phase Two to prepare their report and issue it to the Board of Supervisors.
Do I have such a motion?
So I'm moved.
Okay.
One second.
Second? Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
I kind of, I'm kind of a bit confused. The, weren't, didn't we talk about this some time ago? That the township would use the funds to finish whatever had to be finished that the Villas?
John, the, there's two phases to the Villas. Phase one, which is under one agreement, one development and financial security agreement. And phase two, which is under a separate financial security agreement and development agreement. We've got to keep the monies separate. For phase one, we drew down money and were paid by the bonding company that was holding those funds. Phase one, we have the funds. Micah, correct me if I'm wrong. So for phase two, they have asserted that they have completed the phase two improvements and that they're looking for the release of their financial security. We have to treat that differently than phase one. And we don't have the money yet from the phase two financial security. We are trying to get it drawn down, but the agreement isn't the same as the agreement for phase one. And we have to give the developer the opportunity to finish the public improvements. They say they're done and now we've got to inspect them to determine that. If they aren't done, then we have much better leverage to get the money for phase two, phase two, and complete those improvements as well.
Did we make any improvements on the phase one?
Uh, my God.
Not yet. CKS Engineering is working on that. And they were delayed as well getting the survey. And also we were waiting for the as-built plans for, I don't know, three or four months from, from the developer.
That's right. We didn't have the as-built forever from, from the developer.
Okay. So let me understand this. There's nothing done on the phase one. And there's, from this letter, there's something that the developer has done on the phase two, except for some $300 or something or other.
That's their assertion, John. We, we don't know if that's correct or not. We don't know, A, whether that's the only thing left undone. And B, we don't know that that cost estimate bears any semblance to reality. So that's why this motion will allow our engineer to go out and make that determination.
So that's what this motion is about?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Question about the, the timeline. And I don't know who's best to answer this. Is, is, I believe it's a 30-day timeframe and to go out and inspect, is that, and write the report, is that a reasonable time to assume to get?
Correct, Dennis. Section 510A of the MPC. After you make this motion and authorize the engineer to go out, the report shall be made and mailed to the board and the applicant within 30 days after this authorization.
I think that question is, is, is that adequate?
We don't have a choice. That's what the MPC requires.
That's it.
Any further questions?
Well, can you explain what's the $300 exhibit A about? Can, I tried to read this. I don't understand it.
This is a letter from the developer's attorney making an allegation that the only thing remaining in phase two is a part or a fix that is valued, that they view as being valued at $300. We don't know, again, if that's the case or not. That's why we need CKS to go out. But they have to, CKS is going to have to inspect all of the improvements out there in phase two to determine whether this basin fix is the only thing left or whether there are other things that need to be done.
So the $300 is, that goes to the basin? You were talking about the basin here?
We don't know. We're going to have to let our engineer determine that.
So the money that would be returned, determined, is determined by our engineer's report, whether everything is done and we can give them all the money back or we have to hold some of it?
Correct. Well, they're asking for a final release. They're asking for a release of all the money. And they're saying, except you can hold the $300 because that's what we think our fix for our incomplete work is worth. Let's let Michelle determine that and, and give the township the advice in her report that we can base a decision on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of today is $2,349,443. Plan expiration for the board with no action required. And I just wanted to take a moment to talk about the, the summer camps that the township usually holds under normal circumstance. Unfortunately, the, the more and more time goes on here, we're, we're trying to evaluate whether we can actually physically hold these camps or not. And it unfortunately has come to the point where I think we need to consider canceling them, unfortunately. The, the biggest reasons are that we have no confirmation that we can even have these camps at the locations that we typically have them, which is the school that- at the locations that we typically have them, which is the school district. And as of about an hour ago, we got a notification that Sure Me closed their facilities for the summer. So that would eliminate the camp that's usually held there. So I know, I know we were holding off to optimism, but at the same time, you know, even, even if we did hold these camps, you know, the, the kids, they'd be very limited where they could, you know, the activities they could go to. You know, Sesame Place is closed. The museums are closed. The zoos closed. So there wouldn't be very much for them to do or for them to be interested in. And the guidelines continue to change. And we have to keep in mind that we have predominantly high school aged kids working these camps. So to expect them to be able to diagnose a medical condition is, in my opinion, irresponsible. And in my opinion, something that we should not be asking 17 and 18-year-old people to do. So with that, you know, I'm going to further analyze this stuff today. But I think the, the consensus is that, you know, we're just going to have to forego camps this year. And at the same time, I've spoken with our parking rec department. And we're trying as hard as we can to offer what we can offer with the facilities that the township has. You know, maybe, maybe an option is that we open up a playground camp for kids to go play at a different playground in the township each day where, you know, maybe at the same time, there could be a yoga class being instructed on the other side of the park. So mom gets a little bit of separation time from, from the kids. I know my wife would greatly appreciate that. So I just wanted to bring the board up to speed. And, and really, I'd be sort of asking for your consensus and your, and your increment that this is, this is a decision that the township wants to go.
Any questions?
I have a comment. I think, unfortunately, I think your assessment is probably the right thing to do, Micah. Even if we do have some kind of standard we can hold to the camps, I doubt we're going to get them filled up. And they're not going to be cost effective on top of, you know, the safety concerns.
Yeah, we're, we're down about, well, average, we're, we're down about 70% on registration so far.
It's unfortunate, it is, I think that's the right move is to not have them. That's my opinion.
You know, I would, I would say, I mean, just looking at some easy guidelines, so you have to screen, yeah, for, for illness. You have to, in fact, you have to supervise social distancing. You have to have training. You have to monitor for all these things. Man, that's a lot asking anyone to do.
Sure.
Does that open us up? Sorry, sorry. Does that open us up? Even if we did, I'm just throwing this out there. I know that we're not going to do it, but if we were to, does that open us up to some potential legal ramifications down the road? If, if we did do something like that, it would save?
The classic response, David, is anybody can sue anyone for it.
Okay.
And if folks are litigious, if we hold a program with all of our safeguards and somebody gets sick and decides that they want to try to blame somebody, we're going to get sued and our liability insurance coverage is going, we hope, is going to cover it. That may be something we want to look at if we decide to hold anything. But again, you know, if we stick to the guidelines, at least we'll have a defense that, hey, this is what we were told we can do and this is what we did.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to know. I, I agree with Micah and Kyle. It makes perfect sense to do that. I mean, even taking, if you were, if places were open and, you know, taking kids on the bus together, like, I mean, it's just way too close quarters. And, you know, you're just putting a lot of people at risk until we figure out some normalcy down the road with vaccines and stuff like that. So you're all good, Michael. Michael, thank you.
I, I agree. I mean, unfortunately, it is one of our biggest moneymakers, but I think safety is of the utmost concern. And I, I think we usually coordinate with the Council Rock School District to use some of their facilities, of which I believe they are not making it accessible anymore because of.
We have no confirmation we could even use those facilities.
Right. John, did you want to chime in or you okay with this?
Well, yeah, I mean, from all I'm hearing from people I've gotten feedback from, they feel very uncomfortable sending their kids to summer camp, no matter what guidelines were actually followed even strictly. So parents have a lot of concerns and I know we make money from this, but we also have to think of the safety of, you know, residents and their children. And I think we'll, you know, obviously save some expenses that are involved also.
Absolutely. Okay, is that it, Micah?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you. That's all I have in my report, Mr. Chairman.
Minutes, bills list and reports. Mr. Matt?
Okay, the boring part of the meeting. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the May 13, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes five to zero.
I move that we approve the minutes of the May 18, 2020 Board of Supervisors work session.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes five to zero.
Regarding the bills list, I move we approve the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated May 27, 2020, totaling $306,337.85.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second. Motion and second. Any questions from the board on the bills list? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five to zero.
Finally, I move that we approve the interfund transfers as per the bills list dated May 27, 2020, totaling $280,000 and no cents.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second. Motion and second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Matt. Any public comment emailed in, Micah?
There is no public comment.
No public comment. All right, we'll go on to old business. Any old business to be discussed?
Yeah, I think we should talk a little bit more about the Economic Development Committee. I know we've had several applicants and questions have been brought up about who can be on that committee. I know some people from the Finance Committee, as Dennis mentioned, might want to serve on it. And I'm assuming it's okay for members of other committees to actually serve on this Economic Development Committee. And I just think that would be a good idea. Also, do you want other opinions?
I mean, can we have two different, an individual serve on two different committees? Is that possible?
There's nothing on there.
As long as it doesn't violate a specific provision, like zoning hearing board members can't serve on the Planning Commission or other committees. But certainly someone can serve on the EAC. And if they're interested enough, they can serve on the Economic Development.
Yeah, I did planning commission and EAC for many years.
Okay, at the last minute, I was also asked to see if I could be a liaison with the, whatever the National Newtown Business Association is doing. And I know that Bill Schefer, who is the VP at First National Bank, is the president of the Newtown Business Association. And he submitted his request to be on this committee. But he also, you know, was okay with this liaison if the NBA does have some special tasks for us. And he invited me to make a little presentation at the June 10 Zoom Business Card Exchange that they will be having to ask them what they might be doing and if they would like to have a liaison with the Board of Supervisors. And if you have any input as to what the liaison should be doing with them, I'd appreciate knowing that.
Like to, I think, Phil, you want to, you want to start or?
No, I was just saying, as liaison, you would listen to what, what they're discussing. And hopefully whatever concerns they would have and bring it back to the board and report that. That's, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think you have to give any input at this moment. Just kind of see what their concerns and questions and how they're going to form it and so on, and how they would want to work with the Economic Development Committee and see if we could mesh them both together.
Okay. The other thing is, you know, I know we can have up to nine members. Is that correct? In this committee? It, for me, this is unusual circumstances. And I don't know how many we have right now. Maybe we have four or five. And there's nothing in the resolution that mentions how often this committee should meet. I don't want to scare away. I've had some questions from applicants who want to know what their responsibilities are, you know, how often they would meet, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, I'm looking at this as an emergency type of situation. Whatever they can get started with however members they might have would be something that, you know, we could listen to whatever recommendations they might have. So I didn't know, I know you have to advertise this and so on. It's a little bit of a hindrance to actually getting things going. And I'd like to get things going as soon as possible. So but I would suggest even we don't need the committee to start working before we can start talking about doing some things that I think were mentioned. I know Kyle mentioned a couple of things like, and I know all the places are doing sidewalk dining, you know, special permits or signage, that kind of thing. But we could start working on, you know, because we're in control of those types of things that may be able to help businesses. And I just, you know, want to see if we can continue to move forward. Simultaneously trying to build up this committee, but still making sure we're doing something that could be implemented as soon as possible, if possible.
Yeah, I, I agree with John on that. I think we really need to allow outside spaces to be used, however we do that, to help these businesses get over the crisis. And I think we should do that as soon as possible, hopefully today, so that when we do change status from yellow and then it's a green, we have something in place that we can offer up to our, our businesses.
Let me ask a question. Under the yellow, restaurants still are not open for dining? Is that correct?
As far as I understand, it's correct. But we are theoretically allowed out of the house. So I'm thinking, you know, if they're not allowed inside with proper social distancing, distancing outside, I think that's something that should be allowed.
What do you mean? What should be allowed? What are you thinking?
I'm thinking if you put tables at least six feet apart outside where possible, they can get their food to go and sit out there. I think they should be encouraged to do so.
There is an Apple Theater in the new, in the shopping center where people can sit, I guess. And.
Yeah, or even as I mentioned before, some of the parking spots could be cordoned off.
Why don't we have it so?
I mean.
Back up. We do like, we do, we give them, we give some of the restaurants and shops on Sycamore Street, the ability, maybe like on like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you know, for maybe like noon on to be able to serve patrons outside. And we shut it down for a period of time. I don't know if that's possible, but I know that if they, if like you said, they can repair it and then like Sycamore Grill, they apply for some sort of permit or special permit to gather, or maybe all the different businesses down that, down Sycamore Street. We can have it so that, you know, people can be able to walk and, you know, obviously social distance with masks and stuff like that. But you give the opportunity for those businesses to at least have patrons in. Like I said last meeting, I think that they're going to do, take every precaution to make sure that their customers and their patrons are safe. So we just need to give them some ability to kind of be able to, like I say, win. So if we can put some stuff out, shut them down for not every day, but maybe periods of time throughout the day, towards the end of, towards the weekend, I think that might be really good for their businesses. Just a thought.
Well, that's a different situation. And Newtown Business Association has yearly had a Newtown Welcome Day on Sycamore Street, I believe. And they have canceled that. The exact thing that you're suggesting, closing that Sycamore Street and having stands out there and so on and so forth. I don't think that's a good idea because then you'd be encouraging people to crowd together you know, at the same time, whereas having sidewalk dining is more, you know, controllable, I think.
Yeah, but sidewalks are really small and they won't be able to have, serve enough patrons that way. So.
They're not going to serve, they're not going to serve enough patrons no matter what. But, you know, got to do something, basically.
But what about a compromised hybrid solution? We, we could, I'm not saying we should, it's just talking. Allow them to request a permit to close a street, but it's for those businesses there, not for everyone to bring in tents and whatever. Like Welcome Day, you know, they pack them tent to tent for the entire strip.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need crowds of people. I just think that, you know, we, the businesses can figure it out where, how they position the tables and so forth. And, you know, obviously everyone's going to keep their distance and so forth. But when they get up from their tables, they have to walk because they can't drive there. So I'm sure they'll venture down the street and maybe go into a boutique or something like that. I don't know. But I'm just thinking in my head that we have to find ways. And if they're going to be, if their occupancy levels inside are going to be decreased because of concerns and so forth, if we add some tables outside or let them add tables outside or whatever it is, it gives them a little bit more opportunity to get a little bit more revenue that way. So just a thought.
I'm, I'm willing to make a motion.
Sidewalks aren't going to, the sidewalks aren't going to. What's that, Kyle? Missed that?
I said, I'm willing to make a motion to that effect. And we can make as specific as possible, but I'm willing to make one. I'll make a motion that we, to help businesses cope with the COVID-19 shutdown and upon Bucks County moving to yellow and even green status, we allow Newtown Township businesses to use their own available outdoor spaces to conduct businesses to aid them in maintaining safe social distancing. That's a motion. Maybe not very well performed, but.
I have a motion. Do I have someone wants a second?
Well, I'll second it. We should discuss it.
Go ahead, discuss.
Well, I think we just did.
The outdoors, we're not included.
I was going to ask you.
Parking spaces. I mean, the parking spaces that we have are, they're private property. Number one, mostly on a busy street like Sycamore, you don't want to, you know, go on the street parking area for tables. The sidewalk would be fine, I imagine.
Except the people who want to walk on the sidewalk, John, who are entitled to walk within the public right of way, would be walking in and through tables and chairs of patrons. I don't, I don't have a problem with.
I've done that with Paris so many times.
With this stuff, I don't have a problem with, with things being done on private property that number one, not in the public right of way. And two, that don't otherwise violate the zoning ordinance. Municipalities are all asking about this. And our best advice is that if they want to use parking spaces that count toward their parking requirements for their business or to have outdoor dining when outdoor dining isn't otherwise allowed, they've got to go to the zoning hearing board and get relief for that. That is our formal advice. If they want to do this on their own properties and set this up, if it's going to violate the zoning ordinance, I, I can't recommend it. If it isn't going to violate the zoning ordinance, as long as it's on private property, I'm okay with it.
The state, the state's violating our zoning ordinance. I mean, they're limiting capacity. I don't see how we have to enforce the capacity that they've already cut to zero. I, I understand what you're saying and make it a special event. Make it strictly explain this is for the. I understand what you're saying and make it a special event, make it strictly explain this is for the COVID-19 pandemic and we, they request it for that reason, we approve it for that reason, it's clearly temporary and not changing the zoning on.
I'm not saying that it wouldn't be temporary. Of course it would be temporary, it wouldn't change the zoning, but, you know, there's, there's a num, the number of parking spaces that are provided are there for a reason. Folks to go to these places are going to need to park somewhere and in Brixmore, it's already a mess. So if you're going to be taking up parking spaces.
I understand, but the capacity, the capacity is zero in these restaurants. To require them to reserve parking spaces for zero capacity is ridiculous.
And who's going to enforce the 25 person maximum limit?
That's the state's fault, they can figure that out. I'm saying, if we sense, if we sense, if we sense and where it's safe and available on their property, I say we allow it and make sure it's clear, this isn't a change in zone.
Okay, there's two things.
And I'm going to stick to it is, go ahead, Phil.
I was going to ask you a question in regards to, you made a very good point that anybody can sue anybody for anything. But since these restaurants, eateries are basically inside and now they want to have outside seating, should they be required to show some sort of insurance rider? That in case something were to happen, they are covered for any kind of accident because technically they don't have to have that now because they are not set up for outside eating. But say for instance, they're on a sidewalk and let's take the worst case scenario. Some erratic driver goes up on the sidewalk and just clears all the eater, all the tables out. Who will be liable for, I understand the restaurant, but we also gave them permission to put those tables on the sidewalk. So what happens in that case? Should they have a additional rider to their policy to incorporate for a temporary period outside dining?
Well, I don't, I don't think they need a rider. I think what we need is an indemnification and hold harmless agreement. If anything takes place in the public right of way, we are, the township is indemnified and held harmless by the person placing these things within the right of way for any damages, suits, et cetera, that may result, as a result of them doing that within the public right of way. We're not going to get Brixmore to do that because Brixmore owns all that property privately and we don't have any liability up there. But I'm thinking of the Green Parrot. If the Green Parrot puts chairs and tables on the sidewalk along Sycamore Street, then that may be within the right of way and I'm going to want to be held harmless from that.
But, hold on a second. There are two things, the right of way, the sidewalk, and then private property where some of the parking lots are. Where, we can, there are two different things here, right? Two things like, for example, we could say, you know, like Kyle suggested, the minimum required parking for, you know, could be changed or this goes to the zoning hearing board and they can get a variance, a temporary variance, or whatever. And then there's putting it on the right of way on the sidewalk, which is something you know, you're talking about insurance and you're also talking about getting a variance in the zoning in that case as well.
Depends if there's a violation of the zoning ordinance being proposed. That's what we have to figure that out. In each individual case, we'd have to figure that out.
If they go through the zoning relief method, there's, it's not going to be done before winter. It's not going to happen and it's useless.
Well, they can get it done much quicker than that. I mean, if they applied, they could probably get on the Ju, they could probably get on the July zoning hearing board and be able to do it you know, the day after the hearing.
Yeah, I think we, we use the event permit method and review each request. And if it doesn't meet safety standards, then we don't do it.
That's fine. I mean, we already have a special event application come in from Green Parrot and we responded that what you want to do is not a special event. A special event takes place at a start time and an end time and has a certain number of hours, requires certain police and other things to be provided. This is something that is open ended. It's going to go forward until they're allowed to have people indoors and we don't know when it is. So there's no stop date for this and we said it's not, doesn't fit within the definition of a special event. If you want to change that, then, you know, go ahead and change it, but right now, our special event permit, and Micah chime in, I don't think fits that, that requested activity.
That's great. About a special event, he said, oh, sorry, grab Micah.
Special event permits are for parades.
I understand.
Welcome Day, et cetera. That's what they are for now.
Is there orders or regulations what they are or is that at your discretion?
No, that's just historically what it is.
Well, how about this, like Dave, you said there's a end, a special event has a beginning and an end date, right, or end time? And there's a specific amount of police that we need and so forth. Why can't these businesses apply for more than one of those permits, like in consecutive, like a series of dates, like say, I don't know, whenever the weekend's coming up, right? So like this, the first three days of the weekend of this week and then the following three days of the next weekend. Could they do something like that and have enough police and then they name it welcome back new day, Newtown day, or Newtown Strong Day, whatever it is. I mean, if they label it something, right? And have a specific end, start and end time, then, and have enough security or police, wouldn't that fit the bill?
That, as a special event, it has to benefit the, the public itself. Correct? Micah?
Typically, yes.
And it's not just for the benefit of that particular restaurant to just have extended eating places for that particular restaurant. Now, I would view a special event, I would find it hard for us to keep people out with tents and additional apparatus that want to be on that street because that's what a special event is supposed to be. So if someone has a, a food truck or a, a tent where they could serve kind of food or even knickknacks or what do you want to call them, arts and crafts? Are we supposed to say, no, you cannot come in here because it's only a special event for this particular restaurant?
No, it's for, it's for any local business. I wasn't just saying restaurants. And I don't like the idea of closing the street off necessarily for obvious reasons, so.
Well, that's what a special event would be.
I, listen, we got, our governor shut down businesses for months. We got to think outside of the box, change the name of it.
Yeah, but then you're just, you're just doing it to benefit the particular restaurants so that they can have tables out there for people to eat their food.
People need, people are able to get out of the house, Phil. They can get out of the house.
I got out of the house the other day. I went and picked up food at a restaurant. You can't get out of the house, somebody's stopping you, there's a guard there.
That's the official shutdown, dude. I'm just saying what the governor said. Next month, we're allowed to come out of the house, next week.
There are some restaurants, there are some restaurants ready that have outdoor eating and then there, like Jules Pizza, for example, and then there are some that do not. And so.
Jules Pizza was approved for that, but why? Jules Pizza was approved for outdoor.
I know it's approved, but I mean, I'm just saying, we set up a system here where there's inequality and what about other businesses that want to have serve people outdoors, like a hardware store, they put tables out on the sidewalk and so on.
I don't have to go inside, I stay separate from people, that's what I'm saying.
Dave, can I ask, Dave, can I ask you a question? Would this fall under a temporary certificate of occupancy?
I don't know what you're giving them the permission to occupy. I don't know.
They would essentially need a sign off by the landlord that they can occupy a certain outdoor area, whatever it may be. It would be part of the approved permit. They'd need to file the fees, come in and discuss what they, well, not come in, but they discuss what they, they are applying for. And it would be a temporary certificate of occupancy to occupy a non-public space on private property with approval of the landlord or tenant or owner of the property.
And, and an indemnification and hold harmless of the township.
Correct, and an indemnification clause.
Not hard to do, that's, that's quick. I'm not, I'm not putting them through a whole other procedure, that's a document to sign.
Right, and then, well, that, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't even know if it's allowed under the building code, but it may be an avenue for something like this.
I think these have to be examined on a case by case basis to determine whether there are building code violations, fire code, safety things. If you're going to allow people to put outdoor tables or seating, whether it's restaurants or other businesses, there's fire lanes that have to be established. There's, you know, occupancy limits and issues, you know, it goes beyond, Glenn's going to have to get involved with that.
This is along the lines of what I was going to suggest. I don't know how far off the wall this was, but like a temporary special exemption. I'm not sure if that's a zoning term or.
That's a zoning term and we can't grant that, but I understand what you're saying in concept. Some kind of temporary permission.
Yes, and make it as streamlined as possible so it can happen sooner than later, like weeks instead of months.
Well, again, I don't, I don't know how much we can control on private property except enforcing the zoning ordinance and the building and fire codes on private property. On public property, I would not want any of these things to be within the public right of way. Because that's where the public has the right to go even now under these current order and I don't want a conflict between a business that's set up and folks who are just enjoying the public right of way.
And people walking in the street because they can't get.
Right. And then a car hitting someone who had to walk in the street because there was something set up on the sidewalk. That's, that's where your liability is not looking too good.
Well, I doubt if tables are going to limit people from walking on the sidewalk. I mean, you can have tables and people can also walk by the tables, so.
John, how, the typical sidewalk is four or five feet wide. You're going to put a table on the sidewalk, it's going to block the sidewalk. What kind of table are you talking about?
Six feet apart, also.
But six feet apart. I, I'm having trouble picturing outside of the Green Parrot, there's a sidewalk. If you put a table on that sidewalk, it blocks the sidewalk. Sidewalk's only four or five feet wide.
Okay. So tables two feet.
You can't block, it's within the public right of way. You can't block the ability of people to walk down the sidewalk in Newtown. It's within the public right of way.
Well, I mean, maybe Micah can look into what he suggested. It sounds like maybe a more reasonable approach and maybe we should contact the property owners like Brixmore, see what their planning might be able to plan to do for their tenants.
I think we need to make the call. We can't keep dithering about this topic. If stuff's going to start opening with limited capacity.
Yeah, I think that's what I think.
At least have commissioned something now to do, to take action on at our next, our next meeting, at the very least.
Well, you know, we need to make some kind of step forward here, I think. What was your?
If we can agree on letting them use their own space, not the public right of way, which I'm good with, we'll have Micah figure out how that's going to happen. Really hate to do that to you, Micah, but, you know.
The quick, I mean, the, the straight up answer is I don't know enough about the building code to be able to make that call right now. I need to take a look at it. The, and I need to talk to our building inspector because he's, he's the one that issues a temporary certificate of occupancy. Or to officially use parking spaces would require amended final plan submission, which, that, you know how long that takes, so.
That's way longer than the zoning hearing board, Kyle.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to get the zoning hearing board out of it too, in my opinion. Anything that's going to delay, it's not going to work. And we're not granting relief.
What's the fastest, what's the fastest way to go about giving some relief in terms of outdoor seating? Obviously.
For who, David, for whom?
For all of those shops on Sycamore Street. So you've got most of them are restaurants, but.
You, you just have to say for the businesses, you can't pick the businesses.
Businesses, excuse me, for the businesses, yes, yes, of course. Sorry, there are many. Yeah, for all the, for all the businesses over there.
I, I'm saying in the township, where it's feasible. I don't care if it's Sycamore. I'm not saying where, I'm just saying if you're in the township and you have a space that you can utilize, how can we, how can we allow you to utilize it safely? That's, that's my point. I'm not looking at specific cherry pick.
I like the temporary CO idea. Mike, Mike's temporary CO idea is a really good idea, but people are going to have to apply for it and show that this is not going to be in the right of way, it's going to be on their own private property and give the, and, and the temporary CO would have a time limit on it. And again, I'm, I'm hoping that we don't run into any zoning ordinance issues with that because this board cannot issue any kind of permit that, that in and of itself violates the zoning ordinance without ZHP approval. And if you want to stay away from that, this has got to be entirely on private property and be limited in time and scope and we would want a business to come in and show us a specific, clear plan about where they intend to put tables, chairs, outdoor sale of merchandise, et cetera, that would allow us to discuss it with the folks who enforce the codes to be able to enforce any temporary CO that gets issued.
I think that's fair.
I agree. We need a new motion or what?
Who would, who would determine that this is a right or wrong thing to be doing? The zoning officer or?
The administration, the way we approve special events. That's why I keep going back to special events, that process makes sense.
This is the CO exception, isn't it?
I'm just saying that.
Well, who issues COs, Mike? The building inspector?
Building inspector. The building inspector does. And I don't, he doesn't typically have jurisdiction over outdoor areas. That's the zoning officer, which, who is on leave, so.
Why do you need leave? What's happening?
He's laid off. I'm acting as the zoning officer for now.
All right, so my, my motion was to allow businesses, I can read it again if you want, to use their space to maintain safe social distancing, et cetera. The how, we're going to have, we definitely have some questions, so. I'd like to vote on my motion to look into getting it done and then figure out how we're going to make it happen. That's the way I'm looking at it.
So by their space, you're, you're saying it's got to be their private property?
Yeah.
So that eliminates our sidewalks.
Eliminates public right of way in the street.
Well, if the sidewalk is within the right of way, it eliminates the sidewalk. If the sidewalk is not within the right of way, they may be able to use a portion of it, but again, that's going to have to be a decision made by the, by the code official or the zone, or the zoning officer.
Well, that was seconded, wasn't it?
You seconded it, John.
Right. So, you know, we can have a vote on that and then ask Micah to pursue this and get the zoning officer back to work.
Or, or keep working extra hard, Micah.
Okay. I could get on board with that.
All right. Yes, if it's on their personal property, I have no problem with that, but and some of them would have to appeal to whoever is their landlord if they want to do it in the parking lot.
I agree.
Absolutely. I mean, they're going to have to show permission from, from whoever owns the property to be able to use it.
And again, is there going to have to be a special insurance indemnification for this or?
All I want is for the township to be indemnified and held harmless.
Yeah. Micah, what do you have to do on your end?
I just have to talk to the zoning officer, or, I'm sorry, the building code official and see if it's, it's something that can be issued under a TCO pursuant to state law. If it's not, then we're sort of back to square one. I mean, the only other option is that we just, we have a non-enforcement policy until, until we go to quote unquote green or whatever.
And, and may I say, it would not be an official non-enforcement policy. It would not be written, stated, or otherwise. It would just be something that happens. It would just be something that happens.
Correct.
Now, is, uh, Kyle, I'll ask you since you made the motion, is this going to be a situation where people. Are going to get their food, sit down. It's not going to be a waitstaff coming out there to wait on them.
I think according to the guidelines now, there, well, I don't know if there's any guidelines for serving outside, but, um. My, my thought was while we're in yellow and you're not allowed to serve inside, you probably wouldn't serve outside. It would be to go and you could sit outside. Then when they open to 50% capacity, then they can serve outside. That was what I.
You know, when, when I go to Francesca's, you know, I park and they come out and give me the food. It's, is that a waitstaff? I don't know.
Well, they didn't take, did they take your order?
Yeah, they take by one of my phone or by whatever.
My phone or, or online.
That's not wait time. Yeah.
We're kind of splitting hairs at that point, right? I mean, if you, you walk to them or they walk to you, you're getting the same thing done.
Well, it's like going to a drive-through window. You, you're putting the order in and they hand it to you. It's just almost same, same difference. They're not coming out to wait on you. But I'm, I'm, I'm talking in, in particular, a waiter or a waitress actually coming out. To get your order and bring it in and then bring it back out to you. So, but that's not what, we're just talking about people getting your food and sitting down and eating.
I'd say if it's legal to have a waitress come outside, waiter, waitress, I think in yellow, if it's doable, I'd say we do it. If it's not doable because we're in yellow, then no, I would say it's help yourself.
Well, I think Kyle's motion is subject to all, uh, guidance, protective health guidance from the state.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And CDC.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay. Got some work to do.
Thanks. Thanks, Micah. Sorry.
Uh, any other old business? New business? Any reason for an executive session after this Zoom?
Not from my end, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I guess, uh, just a motion to adjourn and. So moved. I guess we're done. All right, everybody. Thanks for the meeting.
Stay safe, everybody. Thanks.
Our next meeting will also be scheduled for Zoom unless otherwise, uh, determined.
Okay.
Okay. All right, everybody. Be safe. Talk to you later.
Bye bye.